... We're being unmuted.
Admiral, very good afternoon.
Got our own unofficial rule going. All right, welcome to this May 18th, 2020 meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order pursuant to Executive Order Number 20-03 pursuant to coronavirus, public meetings required limited waiver. This meeting will be conducted via teleconference. We'll now inform the public about the Open Meetings Act, which is posted on the City of Norfolk website, which is norfolkne.gov openmeetingsact.html. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And one nation, God, is the law, is the rule, and justice.
Okay. Roll call, please, Brianna.
Claussen?
Yep.
Granquist?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Lany?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
File?
Here.
Weeble House?
Here.
Okay, as a note before we move forward, I just want to say that this teleconference meeting is open to the public and public participation is encouraged. Any members of the public on the line who wish to engage and speak on any item, please press star nine on your phone and we will be notified, you'll be placed into queue to speak. With that, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. I have a request to move items number 16 and 17 to the consent agenda to the full agenda. So I would look for a motion with those changes.
I'll make the motion, moving those two items. Councilman Merrill?
Second that, Councilman Lany.
Okay, motion and second, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Claussen?
Hi.
Granquist?
Hi.
Jackson?
Jackson.
Lany?
Hi.
Merrill?
Hi.
Muren?
Hi.
File?
Hi.
Weeble House?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, all right. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda with the additions of items number 16 and 17.
So move, Your Honor, this is Councilman Lany.
Second, Councilman Merrill.
Motion and second, if no discussion, roll call, please.
Claussen?
Hi.
Granquist?
Hi.
Jackson?
Hi.
Lany?
Hi.
Merrill?
Hi.
Muren?
Hi.
File?
Hi.
Weeble House?
Hi.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that moves us to item number 16 on the agenda. I would look for a motion to consider approval of the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate on file in the city offices for mill and overlay repairs at the intersection of Highway 81 and Highway 275 project and authorization for the city clerk to advertise for bids.
So move, Your Honor, Councilman Lany.
Second, my Granquist.
Okay, motion and second, and to kick off discussion on this, Steve Ramus, please, our Norfolk City Engineer.
Mayor, members of council, this is a request for approval to bid mill, kind of a light maintenance project on Highway 81. This is focused on repairing the asphalt damage or pot, large potholes there at 81 and 275, primarily on the south side of 275. The intent there is to mill full width across the southbound lanes for a couple hundred feet, likewise on the northbound lanes right there to mill those as well. We'll do the same thing on the north side of 275, right there at the intersection, might not be quite as much, might be about 100 feet or so. And then there's some, if we're going to have the mill here, we'll probably look at doing a little bit, maybe 150 feet to 100 feet, right at the Viaduct Bridge, for sure on the southbound lanes, on the north approach, and again, potentially on the southbound lanes, the exiting approach. The county has recently awarded a fairly significant mill and overlay project. We know that their contractor is currently working with us on a PDA for their plant to be set up on the northeast side of town. It's a very short duration project. They, what I understand is they intend to be in and out in about eight weeks, once they start, and so we're moving pretty quick to get plans and specs together so that we can take advantage of them being right here in the community with that plant.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And what would be the hoped-for timeline on this 81 and 275 intersection project?
Most likely sometime in July or early August, but I'd say July is the timeframe.
Okay, good.
I can't remember the length of the cup, but I recall them being, when we met with them, they were saying in and out in about eight weeks with the early June start.
Okay, okay. That area has gotten pretty rough, and I just wanted to make note for the record that it will see some attention, and I know larger part of that, you've had discussions with the State Department of Transportation on more long-term planning on maintenance along the 81 corridor.
Yeah, recent conversations there with the Department of Transportation, they do recognize there is some need for rejuvenation of that 81 through the city limits, so I think they're starting to have that conversation.
Okay, that's helpful, okay. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions for Steve or discussion, council?
Mr. Councilman Merrill, what is the state's financial position in this?
None. We would be, we receive about 50, and I can't remember the exact number, Councilman, but it's between $57,000 and $60,000 annually from the state for, it's part of our maintenance agreement. The thought process there is that when the street is fairly new, it doesn't take quite as much, and as the street ages, it's going to take more, and so they, this is just part of our maintenance responsibility.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Likewise, we are looking at milling the outside lane at Passwalk as well, right along those, that valley gutter at that intersection, so both northbound, southbound, outside lane, we're looking at that as well.
Okay.
At Passwalk at the same time?
Yes.
Or concurrent to that, yeah, okay. Good, because that certainly is in need of some repair as well.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote, roll call, please.
Claussen?
Hi.
Granquist?
Hi.
Jackson?
Hi.
Lany?
Hi.
Merrill?
Hi.
Muren?
Hi.
File?
Hi.
Weeble House?
Hi.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, takes us to item number 17. I would entertain a motion to consider acceptance of a $30,000 recreation area development program grant from the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District to go towards the Riverpoint Square project and authorization for the mayor to sign all contracts and documents related to the grant.
Councilman Merrill, I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, we've got a...
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilman Merrill. Who is the second from?
Councilman Weeble House.
Was that Weeble House?
Affirmative.
Okay, very good. Motion second, and to lead off discussion on this, Andy Colvin, our city administrator. Andy?
Sure, Mayor and Council, thank you. Well, just a little bit of background, the grant agreement that you have here on the agenda and to accept the grant from the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District Recreation Area Development Program is just, it's a component of our partnerships that we like to build and take advantage of here in Norfolk, and the project that this grant agreement is for is for the Riverpoint Square project, the gathering space downtown. It's a project we've been working on for some time, and we can get into a little more details with questions about when that project will go out for bid here in the coming weeks, but this grant is one example of a strong partnership that we have with the Lower Elkhorn NRD, as well as with the city, and then another part of this project is also a grant from the State of Nebraska Department of Economic Development's Downtown Revitalization Grant. So, a number of partners that we have and we like to leverage are part of helping this project come to fruition to give this a great gathering space and area for people to be downtown and spend time downtown in kind of a, as part of a beautification and recreational spot for people to enjoy time together. So this grant is for $30,000. The funding limit for this grant overall is no more than 50% of the eligible components up to $30,000, so this is the maximum amount of money that we can receive for this, from this particular grant program. So, this is an exciting example of a partnership that we do have with our area partners, such as the Lower Elkhorn NRD. With that, I would be happy to take any questions, but we're asking for the council to accept this grant and approve the related documentation for it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, Andy, and since we'll be talking about revisiting this project later in the agenda in terms of contracting for it, I wanted to make note that this extra little bit of help had come in the form of a grant from the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District, which I think, like you said, is a good partnership on both the local and state level, was, I believe, community development block grants from the state that helped pay for a good portion of this project and helps it move forward, so wanted to note that for the public record. Any questions from the council or discussion on this grant? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please, Brianna.
Claussen?
Hi.
Granquist?
Hi.
Jackson?
Hi.
Lany?
Hi.
Merrill?
Hi.
Muren?
Hi.
File?
Hi.
Weeble House?
Hi.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that moves us to item number 19 on the agenda under public hearings. I will open this public hearing at the request of Jerry Schultz to consider a zoning change from R3 Multiple Family Residential District to R1 Single Family Residential District on property located at 405 North 37th Street. And to kick off the discussion as part of this hearing, we'll hear from Valerie Grimes, our city planner.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Tonight, this zone change is before you. It is just located north of Sunny Meadows on 37th Street, kind of at the intersection of 37th and Prospect on the west side of 37th Street. So there is R1 zoning across the street of 37th. This is in a large area of R3 that is not developed except for this one single-family house. The next single-family house on that side of the street is about 900 feet to the north and is still zoned ag. Why the people are coming to request this is they have about an 800 or so square foot detached accessory building currently. They would like another about 800 square foot detached accessory building or to add on to this one for their own personal RV camper storage and other vehicles. R3 zoning does not have something like that. R1 zoning allows them to be up to 8% of the lot of square footage, but no greater than 2,000 square feet, and this lot is about three-quarters of an acre, so they could potentially go up to 2,000 square feet of detached accessory if this zoning goes through.
Okay, thank you, Val. Again, I want to remind anyone from the public on the line who wants to participate to press star nine on your phone, and we will be notified, you'll be placed into queue and called on to speak. And this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone wishing to make comment, they can do so now. Jim, do we see anybody? Okay. Okay, hearing no further discussion, we'll move on to a planning commission report, please, Brianna.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 5th, 2020, at the request of Jerry Schultz to consider a zoning change from R3 Multiple Family Residential District to R1 Single Family Residential District on property located at 405 North 37th Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a nine to zero vote.
Okay, thank you, Brianna. With that, I will close the hearing and we'll move to item number 20. Would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5661 approving a zoning change from R3 to R1 on property located at 405 North 37th Street.
Your Honor, this is Councilman...
...approve of ordinance 5661 on first reading. This is Councilman Lany.
Second, Councilman Merrill.
Okay, motion by Councilman Lany, second by Councilman Merrill. Any discussion on this, council, or any questions for Val on this matter? Okay, hearing no discussion, short title, please, Brianna.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, roll call, please.
Claussen?
Hi.
Granquist?
Hi.
Jackson?
Hi.
Lany?
Hi.
Merrill?
Hi.
Muren?
Hi.
File?
Hi.
Weeble House?
Hi.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5661 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5661 on second and third reading. This is Councilman Lany.
Okay, a motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings by Councilman Lany, did I hear a second?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Jackson.
Okay, second by Councilman Jackson. If no further discussion, roll call, please.
Claussen?
Hi.
Granquist?
Hi.
Jackson?
Hi.
Lany?
Hi.
Merrill?
Hi.
Muren?
Hi.
File?
Hi.
Weeble House?
Hi.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5661 carries on second and third.
Okay, that moves us to our regular agenda, and item number 21. Would entertain a motion to consider approval of the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate on file in the city offices for the Riverpoint Square and Third Street Alley project and authorization for the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Councilman Merrill, I'll make the motion.
Councilman Lany, I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, and to kick off discussion on this, Steve Ramus, City Engineer.
Mayor, council members, this is the request for, to advertise for the bids for the construction of the Riverpoint Square project and Third Street Alley project. We have combined those to encourage more bidders, increase quantities. The invitation for bids would be a three-week bid, bid opening is June 16th, advertising dates would be May 26th, June 2nd, and June 9th. This project was previously bid and was, came in substantially over budget. We've been working now for the better part of about 11 months, 12 months, to relook at the project, figure out how we can get the costs down, and like I say, adding the Third Street Alley to the work, we think is going to bring some additional construction or companies to the table for bidding purposes, having that quantity attached to the project. I'm sure I have any, answer any questions. I guess one other thing I can think of is the project would not, we're not allowing any construction to start until after September 3rd of this year, and looking at a September 1st of 2021 completion. So, about this time of year, we know contractors are full, but we're starting to push work out for, if there's something we can get done this fall, or certainly we're pushing work out for next year now.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions from the council or discussion?
Steve, this is Councilman Weeble House, just a couple of questions on this, just to kind of revisit this project. Adding the alley in, and that alley definitely needs some attention, what, on your engineering estimates or what have you, had we planned on doing that alley, or were you putting the alley in to make it more palatable for somebody to bid on?
Councilman, I think I missed the last part of that question, but...
Sorry.
The alley, we actually had the alley initially set up as part of the larger, the larger project we had bid out, I don't recall if it was the mill and overlay project, or it was attached to Prospect, but it was actually attached to an earlier project. We pulled it off that project to kind of hold just from a budget perspective. We're still looking at plans on that, we were working that internally as well. After kind of the bids came in on Riverpoint Square, the first go-around, and again, looking at how we could get that project better scoped to increase bidder interest, we thought, well, what an opportunity, you know, let's just take the opportunity, we've got Third Street, or that Third Street Alley sitting there, let's add that alley. That has a value somewhere around $100,000 on that alley reconstruction, and then the Riverpoint Square itself with the work on Second Street and a little bit of work on Norfolk Avenue, that project is around 400 and, you know, mid 400s.
Okay, and on the, so the alley had already been planned for another project, but just, we're just going to put it all in with this one now, as I said, to make it, I guess, more palatable for somebody to bid on, right?
Correct.
Desirable?
The concrete prices that we saw during the first bid were almost in the range of double what we would see for street-related type work, and so we're hoping here that by adding the alley there, we can get concrete prices that are a little bit closer to what we would typically see for street work versus kind of site flat work. Certainly recognize that there is some site flat work there with the Riverpoint Square piece itself, but we think bringing, you know, getting more of a street perspective added into the project, we'll see those prices come down significantly.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Steve, this is Rob Merrill. The, those concrete prices that we had originally gotten were, I know they were, they were quite high, was that not a, was that not a reflection of the floods of last year?
It definitely was. Anything that we were bidding towards spring of last year definitely had price reflections due to the flood and some of the unknowing of what was going to be going on there. We also had a lot of work taking place already in the downtown with several businesses or trying to get out of the ground. The one bid that we did get was a interested, what do I want to say, city business, they're a downtown partner of ours on a lot of projects, and they really wanted to see that project go, so they scrapped together a bid and gave us a bid using the resources that they had available, and, so it was a combination of things.
Okay, can you tell me, oh, where are concrete prices today for this type of work versus where they were, let's say, 18 months ago?
Well, in general, we're seeing concrete prices starting to come down. Some projects that are currently bidding for next year are bidding, I'd say, in the range of 5% to 10% below engineer's estimates right now.
In your estimation, would you say that, that's more in line with a rate of inflation?
Oh, inflation on this type of work is running about 3.5% a year over the last 15 to 20 years, that's a pretty standard number for public infrastructure costs. I think the decrease that we're seeing right now, again, it might be different if I was bidding it and wanted the work done by November of this year, December of this year, I think opening that up until next year, we're the first, you know, this is going to be one of the first projects the contractor is able to slate for next year, and so that's working to our benefit.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much, that's good information to have.
All right, go ahead.
Do I go ahead? This is Councilman Weeble House again, I just, somebody could just answer the question, I mean, this project's been going on for a couple of years with the planning and what have you, how exactly, what, I know we've got the NRD grant, which is great to have, isn't there some other grants that are going to this and plus some other facets of funding, just so we have that out there again, so we can remember where that's all coming from?
So we have a CDBG grant, there was a larger CDBG grant, and I don't remember the exact dollars there or what it was, but a portion of it went into downtown facades, I think whether it was a match or something like that to businesses, but a portion went to facade improvements. The portion of that grant that's going to the Riverpoint Square is $230,250. In addition to that, we've got some of our park enhancement funds in there, we have some of our landscape master plan funds in there, the NRD grant for 30,000 that was just talked about earlier, and we have some highway allocation funds in there for the work, any of the work that's being done inside the right-of-way with reconstruction of Third Street, you know, that sidewalk's starting to buckle quite substantially now, so anything that's inside the right-of-way, part of the sidewalk or street, curb and gutter, that's all chaff, and by chaff, I mean city highway allocation funds.
Yeah, as the councilman noted, this one is a project that's been in the works for some time, and I think patience in this regard has been a good thing, I think it continues to be an important project for the overall development of downtown and our efforts in people attraction that will benefit our downtown businesses, but for various reasons, we've had to put it on hold last year.
Yeah, as the councilman noted, this one is a project that's been in the works for some time, and I think patience in this regard has been a good thing. I think it continues to be an important project for the overall development of downtown and our efforts in people attraction that will benefit our downtown businesses. But for various reasons, we've, we've had to put it on hold. Last year, it again fell victim to the flooding and some of the challenges we had in contractors there. But I think the silver lining in waiting is that we've done some creative redesign to simplify and streamline the bidding process, and also find ways to cut costs where we can and make it fit within the budget that we've carefully planned for over a number of years that primary portions of it come from utilizing state grants in the form of the Community Development Block, Block Grant Program that Steve just mentioned. The sources in our budget that we dedicate toward landscaping and beautification, the parks budget, a small portion of it coming from the parks budget, and now this partnership with the NRD. So, I think it's a good collaboration. I think good things come to those who wait, and this is a project that's ready to finally take its first steps forward. Any other questions or discussion from the council? And I want to remind the public, anyone wishing to weigh in or join the discussion on any of these topics, you can do so by pressing *9 on your phone, and you'll be placed in, into queue, and will be notified that you wish to speak. If no further discussion on this item, I would ask for roll call, please, Breanna.
Lawson.
Aye.
Granquist.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Langy.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Muren.
Aye.
File.
Aye.
Weeblehouse.
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay. It takes us to item number 22. I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5662 vacating a portion of Cottonwood Street located in part of Park Edition in the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska.
You're right. I'll make a motion. This is Councilman Granquist.
Second that, Councilman Langy.
Okay. Motion and second. And for some background on this, again, Steve Ramis, please.
Mayor, members of council, this is a little bit of cleanup related to the Norfolk Avenue project that occurred a couple of years ago, and some work there at the Hy-Vee parking lot for the Hy-Vee gas station. In conjunction with work that we're currently doing with regard to the Johnson, or the, yeah, the Johnson Park improvements and the river restoration project, Cottonwood, the Cottonwood right-of-way extends south of Norfolk Avenue all the way, almost all the way down to Madison Avenue. And what we are doing here is, this is part of a larger concept to plat over the property inside the banks of the river, so from the high, high side of the bank down into the river. That is currently generally owned by Hy-Vee, aside from this piece of cottonwood that extends south. Working with them, and again, with the river restoration, there's going to be a drop structure located right in here. And so, we want to have ownership or right-of-way per se over that riverbed, so that people who are navigating the river, standing, standing in the river are not trespassing. Again, some of this kind of dates back to a little bit of work on Norfolk Avenue and our work with Hy-Vee and the gas station. And so, this is kind of some, a little bit of final cleanup related to that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any questions from the council or discussion on this?
Steve, it's Councilman Merrill. So, the city, this, the city would be liable for, then for any insurance claims against people, for example, falling into the river along that particular corridor? And that would be covered by our, our existing insurance? Is that correct, or is that not?
I don't know. I'm getting a head, a head shake here from our, from our attorney that yes, but yes, that is the case. And, you know, we would, we would be the underlying owner of the property inside the banks of the river, and so, we would have liability associated with that.
Yeah. But it would not be unlike any other liability we have in, in, in other areas of town that, that you would consider the same.
Right. Any, any city park, any city right-of-way.
Yeah. Okay.
We have responsibilities for maintenance.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion from the public? Don't see anyone in the queue. Hearing no further discussion. Short title, please, Breanna.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to vacate a portion of Cottonwood Street located in part of Park Edition in the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Lawson.
Aye.
Granquist.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Langy.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Muren.
Aye.
File.
Aye.
Weeblehouse.
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5662 carries on first reading.
Okay. It takes us to item number 23. I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5663 amending Section 24-100 to make an exception relating to operation of utility-type vehicles on the roadway in the city limits to enact Chapter 24, Article 11 of the city code to prohibit all terrain, terrain vehicles and allow the operation of utility-type vehicles on city streets and highways, and setting provisions under which utility-type vehicles may operate.
This is Councilman Merrill. I'd offer for council's consideration, ordinance number 5663.
Councilperson Lawson, second.
Okay. Motion and a second. And to kick off discussion on this item, we'll turn to Chief Don Miller, Chief of the Norfolk Police Division.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The proposed ordinance that you have is the collection of discussions that have been had for probably a couple of years. It's been brought up and discussed and trying to come up with a ordinance that both meets statutory requirements and also meets the safety concerns of the city. And after a lot of discussions and work, this, this is the ordinance that we've, that we've put together. The ordinance is for utility-type vehicles, known as UTVs. It does not include the smaller trail models, the smaller ATVs, golf carts, or low-speed vehicles. We're using state statute definitions to stay consistent. And as we were looking at the equipment and requirements for this option, again, there's many, several state statutes that require, that are required if the city decides they want to allow this. So, a couple of the things that I would like to point out as far as equipment that we've decided on the ATVs, of course, it has to have adequate muffler, and one of the things that we're requiring is operational headlights, taillights, brake lights, and turn signals. It's going to have to have a safety flag, liability insurance, and any safety equipment that is factoring the vehicle, such as seat belts, has to be included in that vehicle. If the vehicle obtains or has all those required pieces of equipment, the process will be to bring that vehicle to the police station, will do an inspection to make sure that it has all the equipment and matches all the requirements of the ordinance. If all those requirements are met, then the people will fill out an application for registration. There will be a $50 registration fee paid at the police station, and then we will issue a license plate similar to what you see in the back of a motorcycle, although it's a city plate, not a state plate, for the registration. That, that plate will need to be mounted at the back of the UTV to show that it's been registered. And then, there's some additional requirements that are worth mentioning that are also, many of these are state statutes and some are city ordinance guidelines. But this will apply to only Norfolk corporate city limits. It can be only operated between sunrise and sunset. The total number of occupants cannot exceed whatever the design capacity is of that UTV. It cannot operate above 30 miles an hour. If the speed limit is 25 or something less than 30 miles an hour, they have to follow that speed limit. The driver must be 18 years old and have a valid driver's license or farm permit. They must obey all regular traffic laws. They can cross state highways at intersections, but they cannot operate on the state highways. That includes Highway 81, Highway 275, and Highway 35. The registration issued will be for the calendar year, expiring December 31st of each year. And any plates issued after December 1st will get the following year's registration. The UTVs need to be registered with a Norfolk registration if they're operated in Norfolk. Any, some other communities also have their own registrations, and the other community registrations will not be recognized because they may or may not have similar guidelines that we want to make sure are included for safety purposes. Part of that, if there is a violation, any regular violations, let's say it's a stop sign or a traffic light that's already on the books, that fine would be associated with whatever the normal fee schedule would be. But if there's violations specific to the UTV, that fine will be anywhere from $250 to $500. The city has the ability to revoke the, or suspend the registration if people are violating the ordinances as they are, and the vehicle can be impounded if they violate those, those ordinances. This was put together as an effort to make sure that we met the needs and the requests that we've had for UTVs, but yet still maintain the safety as best we can with those UTVs. So, that's a general overview. When people register their UTVs, they will be given a list of the requirements and the guidelines, so that there's no question. We'll also do public education on social media and press releases to make sure that people understand exactly what the requirements are. So, anybody who has a registration will know exactly what the guidelines and the laws are that apply to that special-use vehicle. So, if there's any other questions on that summary, I will answer them.
Chief Miller, this is Councilman Merrill. But did I hear you correctly? You said operators must be over 18, so that would not, that would not include younger operators, 16 to 18, that had just gotten their license?
Well, to clarify, it's 18 or older. So, people that are 16 and 17 cannot operate them. The operator has to be 18 or older.
I see. All right. Thank you very much.
Again, any members of the public wishing to weigh in on this topic, or others, can press *9 on your phone, you'll be placed into queue. It does look like we do have one person. When you talk, the number ends in 5313. So, I think that person is unmuted right now? Okay. The floor is yours.
Correct. My name is Luke Cruz. Thanks for letting me have the floor. I did hear mention of the UTVs. I didn't catch that if golf carts were allowed or not. I know we get asked about it quite a bit. A lot of the surrounding areas allow it, and Fremont's a town of similar size that does it. I know Hickman, we go down there quite a bit, and it's kind of a thriving community outside of Lincoln, South Lincoln, and, and they use it and really love it. And I know that they're street legal with, with the lights and blinkers and, and the taillights, and they're extremely safe. So, I just, I wanted to clarify on that.
The, the current ordinance does not include the smaller ATVs, golf carts, and slower-moving vehicles. There, there's a set of statutes that regulates ATVs and UTVs, and there's a whole separate set of statutes that regulates golf carts. If that's something that they would, that we would decide to look at in the future, that's, that would be a different conversation. However, the statutes for golf carts statutorily would only be allowed to go a maximum of 20 miles an hour on city streets, and there's some concerns that that could interfere with normal traffic flows if they're only allowed to go 20 miles an hour. The city does not have the ability to raise that speed limit. That's a statutory guideline.
Yeah. I guess they go under that to get under the federal guidelines, to go 20 on purpose and to make them safe. And I guess, I looked up the city ordinances on Fremont, and they just don't, like for us, we just won't allow them on, on 275 or Highway 81, or any road going over 35. So, they, they had a pretty simple ordinance that I looked on there, but I, I appreciate you clarifying that for me.
Okay. Any, any further questions or, or discussion on this?
This is Councilman Granquist. I'll just add a little bit to that, being part of the subcommittee meeting, where the, the ordinance between, say, golf cart or UTV were, were so much different than each other that it wouldn't be a good idea to have those as the same ordinance. But there was some discussion there, but obviously, we, we elected to, to put that off and have some better discussions and, and give that a different look than we would UTVs. That's why, that's one of the reasons of moving forward with just UTVs on this ordinance, because it'd be, it'd be, we'd jumbled with different types of vehicles that have completely different ordinances.
Councilman, I could make it out, you're a little bit hard, hard to hear, but I think in summary, you're saying that the city council subcommittee discussion on this included talk of golf carts, but that the regulations, state regulations guiding both were, were so different that it would have been challenging to include those in a, in the same ordinance as what we're considering now? Is that, is that basically it?
Yeah. You're right, Josh. I picked up my phone, so it was a little bit clearer, but yeah, you, you started that perfectly, what I was, what I was saying there.
Yeah. So, there was some discussion. I, I wasn't able to be part of the subcommittee discussion, but there was some discussion, perhaps, on, on future exploration of, of golf carts and other ATVs. Is that accurate from the subcommittee discussion?
Yes. Yes. That's correct. And, and like you noted, it's just, with the differences in state statutes, it wouldn't make sense to have these both on the same ordinance, so it's, it's out there for further discussion, but we're moving forward with just the UTVs.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. And again, we want to clarify here that state highways are out of bounds in, in terms of this ordinance for these UTVs, so Highway 81 and 275 and 35. And I think that's a reasonable thing in terms of public safety. Does that seem to jive for other communities that have created their own ordinances regarding UTVs? Does that jive with what they're doing, prohibition on state highways? Do some go further into major arterial streets, or is it mostly just state highways?
We looked at several different ones, and the, the state highways is the most common restriction that you would see, and there's some obvious reasons. Again, the, the speed limits are higher, and with the speed, 30 mile an hour maximum speed, there's a safety concern if you're actually obstructing traffic, and if they're following their laws, it becomes unsafe for people involved.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or discussion on this, council, or, or anybody in the queue, Jim? It looks like not at this point.
I guess Luke Cruz, just a citizen, again, in the queue. How do I go about talking to the subcommittee about golf carts?
Well, I think, Andy, I don't know if you want to handle that, but I think another discussion could certainly be arranged. And Luke, we could certainly invite you to come in and talk more about those. And so, yeah, I, I think we'd certainly be open to arranging that, that discussion at, at some point.
Yeah. Mayor, I'll...
there's a safety concern if you're actually obstructing traffic, and if they're following their laws, it becomes unsafe for people involved.
Any other questions or comments or discussion on this? Council or anybody in the queue, Jim? It looks like not at this point.
I guess Luke Cruz, just a citizen again in the queue. How do I go about talking to the subcommittee about golf carts?
Well, I think, Andy, I don't know if you want to handle that, but I think another discussion could certainly be arranged. And Luke, we could certainly invite you to come in and talk more about those. And so, yeah, I think we'd certainly be open to arranging that discussion at some point.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll agree with what you said. I don't think an action of the council's necessary, I guess, from the conversation right now. If it's a consensus of the group here to have staff put together a subcommittee meeting to discuss that specifically for golf carts, we will get that scheduled, and we will let Mr. Cruz know, and we will do so. We'll get on that this week and see if we can get something scheduled. No actions necessary, so we'll do that. That's the wishes of the council.
So Luke, we'll discuss that internally, and we'll be in touch with you.
Sounds good.
Any further discussion or questions on this? Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Short title, please, Breanna.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section twenty-four dash one-hundred of the Official City Code to make reference to an exception related to operation of utility-type vehicles, to enact Chapter twenty-four, Article eleven of the Official City Code to prohibit the operation of all-terrain vehicles, and allow the operation of utility-type vehicles on city streets and highways, and setting forth provisions under which utility-type vehicles may be operated, provided when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and should provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. With that, please vote. Roll call, please.
Clausen.
Aye.
Granquist.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Langy.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Muren.
Aye.
File.
Aye.
Weeble House.
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-six sixty-three carries on first reading.
I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-six sixty-three on second and third. Means there's no opposition to this?
Second.
Second.
Sorry, that was Councilman Granquist who made the motion.
Yep. Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Clausen.
Aye.
Granquist.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Langy.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Muren.
Aye.
File.
Aye.
Weeble House.
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-six sixty-three carries on second and third.
Okay. It takes us to item number twenty-four. I would entertain a motion to consider approval of amendment number two to the original engineering services agreement with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for the Norfolk Johnson Park Improvements Project for an amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Don't move, Your Honor.
Councilman File, second.
Hey, motion in second, and Steve Ramis, again, some background on this, please.
Yeah, Mayor, and Council, it's all about, about a year ago now, maybe over a year ago, we started to move design contracts forward for the Johnson's Park improvements, river restoration deals. Original contracts did not include a substantial amount of money for permitting. We knew we would be coming back to amend those contracts to add the permitting necessary to move the project forward. There was a little bit of money in there, I think it was about fifty, four hundred dollars in JEO's original contract for one end of litigation. We've used that, those dollars very efficiently and had some room, giving the Corps of Engineers to make sure that the permit that we were applying for would have the job and work through several questions related to that permit. This is adding about twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to the contract to continue the permitting process, specifically related to the four oh four permit, but also includes certainly the wetlands and wetland components. Approximately forty-eight hundred dollars of this amendment is directly related to final four oh four application, and then there's about nineteen thousand for initial response and comments, so we can respond to the Corps of Engineers' questions. Overall, I would say with this amendment, we're sitting right now at about thirty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry about that. I didn't have my button pushed. My mic should be active now. With this amendment, we're going to be pushing right at about thirty thousand dollars for the environmental and Army Corps of Engineers permit work. We had about a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for that work between the various components, the Johnson's Park component, the potential relocation of the old railroad bridge downstream, river restoration, Johnson's Park, the First Street Bridge. So all of those components together are all really part of this larger permit application. And again, originally, we had about a hundred thousand dollars budgeted. With this amendment, we'd be at about thirty thousand dollars for those services.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. So I heard you say that it's, in essence, a comprehensive permit that we're submitting for all components and elements of this restoration, Johnson Park improvements, railroad bridge relocation project. So we're not going to have to piecemeal this.
That's correct.
With the Corps. Okay. There's certainly value in that. Any other questions or discussion on this?
Steve, this is Councilman Merrill. At the time this was originally bid, how many other firms bid on this particular contract?
This is, yeah, nobody bid. This is our engineering contract with JEO and Riverwise. So we go through, I don't recall right away whether we went through an RFP process, but we had engaged JEO very early in the process of vetting the project, bringing Big Muddy Workshop to the table, bringing Riverwise to the table. Certainly, Riverwise and the river restoration component is a substantial component of the project and a very specialized area of work, so. That answer your question?
Well, I guess I'm wondering why, I mean, it would seem to me that the permitting process is certainly not something that would, that nobody was aware was going to happen, so I would be a little, I guess my question is, why did it not show up in the first go around?
Well, it was very intentional in our drafting of the contracts not to include that. We don't know necessarily what direction the project's going to go. We don't know what it's going to look like. And so rather than just write a hundred thousand, again, our budget was a hundred thousand, so upfront, you know, the option was we could have written a hundred thousand dollars into the contracts, and then just kind of waited to see how the project goes, and then we're kind of monitoring consultants' work and charging against that larger amount versus writing the contracts for preliminary design. As we get through preliminary design, now bringing this back to the table to move through the permit process. So I think it's, ultimately, it's easier for us to manage it this way, and I think overall, we tend to see lower costs when we manage it this way.
So are you saying as you start getting a clearer picture of design, it gives you a more crystal-clear picture of the permits that you do need?
Correct. Correct.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Again, as we move the project forward and get through permitting, we'll be back to amend multiple contracts for final design and bid documents.
Very good. Thank you, Stephen.
Any further questions or discussion?
Steve, this is Councilman Weeble House. Just a couple of quick questions. So, you know, the lump sum is to prepare the permit application, and then the nineteen thousand dollars, based on powerally, how many hours is it going to take to answer all the questions from the Corps? And, I mean, is that the top amount, or do they anticipate going up to nineteen thousand?
That's our crystal ball in terms of what we historically see and in terms of conversations, questions back from the Corps of Engineers as we work through permits. You know, I would say, I think, honestly, I think the number's a little bit light. We have a long ways to go in terms of timeframe to get through the entire environmental permitting conversation, but I would say that number is probably reflective of around a hundred and twenty, somewhere a hundred and twenty hours, a hundred and thirty hours.
Okay.
You know, and there's, again, because it's multiple projects, there's probably three or four key consultants at the table. We have Riverwise at the table. We have the environmental scientist from JEO. We have our project lead with JEO. Potentially, Big Muddy Workshop is there, but they're not there as much. But, so you bring three, four people to the table, you know, and you're talking somewhere a week's worth of work overall for each of those individuals.
And that nineteen thousand, that includes Riverwise being at the table?
This agreement is specific to JEO. We will have to amend Riverwise's contract here at some point, but to date, to date, there's been enough residual in his contract, I'd say a couple thousand dollars residual in his contracts that we've used for his services towards the four oh four permit.
All right. Thank you.
As I think a lot of us are aware, the permitting process with the Corps is not a simple one, and it's a long journey in a lot of ways. It doesn't happen overnight, and there are several moving parts to this project. And to Steve's point, it probably wouldn't have made sense to try to spitball a figure associated with costs for permitting at the initial authorization of the contract, not knowing exactly what we needed to pursue. So I think this strategy is the best one we have in hand, and we're trying to utilize the resources we're working with as efficiently, as effectively as possible on the different facets of the project. And, yeah, given the initial estimate of what this could cost over the many months process that this takes, we'll hope that it continues to come under, as we're seeing now. Any other discussion? Anybody in the public queue? Appears not. If no further discussion, please roll call.
Clausen.
Aye.
Granquist.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Langy.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Muren.
Aye.
File.
Aye.
Weeble House.
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay. Item twenty-five would look for a motion to consider approval of final change order number one F with Retchens Construction for the Sanitary Sewer Extension District number two-fifty, Portia Place, resulting in a net decrease of five thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars ninety-five cents.
Your Honor, as a big fan of net decreases, I would offer this motion. Councilman Merrill.
Second that, Councilman Langy.
Motion in a second. To give us some background on this, please, Steve, again.
Mayor and Council, this is for a small sanitary sewer improvement district up on the south side of Portia Place, right along the city limits, northwest side of town. About a year, year and a half ago, we were approached by two of those homeowners up there. Both of their systems were in failure mode, and so we've been working with those four residences along there for the past year or so to get this in place. Work was completed. As you can see here, we're looking at a final change order with a decrease. The substantial portion of that decrease is in the de-watering that was not required. Couple other miscellaneous items in there of increase and decrease as well from a unit price perspective. But overall, it was a very good project. I think we've had two of those already attached to our sanitary sewer system, and again, it was generally a good project. So, any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Clausen.
Aye.
Granquist.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Langy.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Muren.
Aye.
File.
Aye.
Weeble House.
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay. Takes us to item twenty-six. I would entertain a motion to consider approval of change order number three with JJK Construction LLC for the two thousand nineteen Norfolk Bridge Repairs Project, resulting in no change to the contract amount.
Don't move approval, Your Honor. This is Councilman Langy.
Second. Granquist.
Motion in second, and Steve, can you give us background on this, please?
Mayor and Council, this is our two thousand nineteen Bridge Repair by Contract, or Bridge Maintenance Repairs by Contract, project. There were three structures in this bridge, or in this project, that we're getting some maintenance on them. First Street over the levee north of town, Benjamin Avenue over the levee, which has not started yet, and then Elm Street over the North Fork, which started right around the first part of May. This change order here, change order number three, is for work relative to the Elm Bridge and Elm Bridge approaches. It is a no-cost change order, however, it is a reasonable change in scope, as well as we are adding ten days to the contract. Existing contract for the Elm Bridge was twenty-eight calendar days. We're adding ten days to complete this work, giving them thirty-eight days. The change in scope is we had less deck delamination than we initially anticipated. However, once we milled off the approach and milled off the street section directly east of the approach, to come back in there and re-overlay the asphalt was not going to be, you know, we would end up with the similar fatigue cracking being, what I want to say, propagated through an asphalt slab. And so, in looking at it and having some conversations, shifting some of the quantities around and replacing, I can't remember the exact number, but it's about thirty feet of the street that would be directly east of the east approach, would allow us then to overlay the east approach. So we're shifting money around. We're going to, this is anticipating completely removing about thirty, thirty-five feet of street east of the bridge, bringing that back in with full-depth concrete, tying that full-depth concrete then into the approach repairs on the east side, and then tying that into the bridge deck. Overall, I think this is probably going to add life to that bridge versus the repairs that we had in place prior. So I think it's a... Um, so I think it's a, it's a good use of, kind of a good reshuffling of the dollars we had available for that project.
Okay. Makes sense and I'll say it's good to see progress happening on, um, each of these bridge, uh, projects that were much-needed, uh, repairs, so, um, it's good to see the crews out doing work. Any questions on this particular, um, change order that does not result in any change to the contract amount?
Notice, Steve, that, uh, we added 10 days to it, uh, and, excuse me, that is calendar day, so it still shouldn't affect us being completed in time for, uh, school starting, I take it, yet.
That, that is correct, Jim.
Excuse me.
Or Councilman Langy. You know, with a, kind of a, I don't remember exactly when they started. I know it was somewhere in that first week of May, so we're still looking at, uh, this being wrapped up, certainly before July.
Any other questions? And I don't see anyone in the queue for further discussion. So hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Clausen?
Aye.
Granquist?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Langy?
Aye.
Merrill?
Aye.
Muren?
Aye.
File?
Aye.
Weeble House?
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, item 27 would entertain a motion to consider approval of an engineering construction design services contract with Olson Incorporated for the 37th Street Drainage Project for $9,500.
Don't move, Your Honor. This is Councilman Langy.
Second. Councilman Merrill.
Okay, motion in a second. And Steve, again, please kick off discussion, of course.
Mayor and council members, um, the city here about a, oh, in the last year or so, we've annexed some additional property down in the south, uh, south side of, southwest side of the community. This would be South 37th Street at Omaha Avenue. Um, and it's an area that, that also had some drainage issues last year during our heavy rain events there in March and, uh, I know the county had done a project over there and they had installed some additional culverts, uh, to, to pass some drainage through there. Um, what's happened is over time, there has been some, oh, land practice, I think, that has altered a little bit the natural drainage path and so as we continue to develop down in that area, um, all the way up into, um, our West Highway 275 and even north of Highway 275, all of that kind of comes down that corridor and ends up down at Omaha and needs to cross Omaha and get down to the rivers where it's ultimately headed. So this is a, a kind of a high-level drainage study with Olson. Uh, we selected Olson for this because, partially because of their work right now with that, uh, the Bradford Business Park. And then also they are working with us on another contract to look at potential wetland mitigation banking, um, which, uh, that particular study is, is looking at some property down in that general area that may tie into, uh, this drainage study. What this is going to do is this is going to look at LiDAR data, uh, for that area, develop drainage contours, uh, drainage characteristics, uh, tell us what's going on, where the water's trying to get to and, and give us a better idea where we might be able to help divert it. Uh, it'll develop a hydraulic model, which is kind of what that stuff is, evaluate the existing culverts there at those intersections as well as some other areas, um, south of Omaha and then come, uh, Olson's will present some, prepare some alternatives on how to deal with that and bring those alternatives back to us for, uh, discussion.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions?
So Steve, this is a, uh, this is a standalone bid. This is not in, in, um, an addition to any other work that Olson is doing in the area?
Um, no, you know, I did visit with Matt a little bit about that and then talking, you know, could it be an amendment to this, you know, this contract or that contract? Um, it really doesn't fit in with wholly into any one of those other areas. Uh, we kind of looked at it more of this, it's a very, it's the hydraulic modeling. It's kind of a specialty thing. Um, for, for funding on that, I would use funding that I have available in my engineering budget to fund this. Um, I think there's a, there certainly, like I say, there's a real big picture to this. It impacts how we're dealing with the drainage all the way up to Highway 275, a little bit west, uh, even that first quarter mile to mile west of, of 37th Street. Um, you know, getting a really good picture of how to handle this, this last major street crossing before you get to the river, um, is kind of one of those things that we tend not to do. Uh, and we're working with other developers right now in the community and some areas that are continuing to be developed up in the northwest corner and, um, you know, foresight probably 15, 20 years ago, as some of that development started, we didn't get big enough drainage structures where we needed them and so how do we address that now? So this is kind of helping us forecast down in that area what we need to do to get the drainage improvements in there so we can continue development to, up in that west, northwest corner of town.
Okay, any further questions?
All right, thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Clausen?
Aye.
Granquist?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Langy?
Aye.
Merrill?
Aye.
Muren?
Aye.
File?
Aye.
Weeble House?
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, last but not least, item 28 would look for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number 5664, annexing a tract of land generally located north of Walters, East Knowles 12th Edition.
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance number 5664 on first reading. This is Councilman Langy.
Second. Councilman Granquist.
Okay, motion in second. And Steve, one more time, background on this, please.
Absolutely. Mayor, council members, um, we continue to grow, is the good news. Uh, with that growth comes more, more need for housing. Uh, East Knowles has presented us here with the East Knowles 13th Edition Annexation. Um, this extends the East Knowles project up to Benjamin Avenue now and will be annexing about 300, a 300-foot length of Benjamin Avenue. Uh, when we do, do that annexation, that annexation goes to the north side of the public right-of-way. Um, so if you have any, any other questions, I'd sure be able to answer those.
Okay.
Steve, uh, clarify for me, uh, is this the area, that portion of Benjamin Avenue, is that being rebuilt right now or not?
It is. Yeah. We'll be annexing, we'll be annexing.
So we're gonna, are we gonna get cost on that or is, since the county's already doing it, is that, uh, part of their baby?
That's, that's their baby.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't want to see, uh...
Timing is everything, Councilman.
...368 foot of paving suddenly making it way over to us, so.
Generally, I think we've got a pretty good partner there. That's my experience.
Yeah. I agree.
As Steve indicated, another, uh, good sign of, of growth in addition to our housing inventories, which is important. Um, any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, and seeing no one in the public queue, no further discussion. A short title, please, Brianna.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to annex to said city a tract of land lying wholly in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section 24, an attractive land lying wholly in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section 13, all in township 24 North, range 1 West of the 6th PM Madison County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, roll call.
Clausen?
Aye.
Granquist?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Langy?
Aye.
Merrill?
Aye.
Muren?
Aye.
File?
Aye.
Weeble House?
Aye.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5664 carries on first reading.
And that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.